Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let the roll call show that Councilman Weaver is not present. He did contact me this afternoon that he may not be able to make it. I think he had a pet that was having surgery. But we do have a court. And we'll move forward.
Tammy.
Oh, excuse me. Tammy's not here either. Councilwoman Tammy Hart, she is also not here. Has anybody heard from Tam?
She's under.
Tammy is is ill tonight.
Bill and Will.
Right. We still have a court. And have the motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
So moved.
And I have a second.
Second.
Then moved by Councilman Zan, second by and second by Councilman Demme. Any further questions?
There was two issues that came up right before the meeting that wished to be added to agenda or building permits. One was Valdez on a trailer that she wishes to move building permit for that. And then the second was Matt Leboe on a business license.
Do you have their paperwork?
I do. It's included in the packet.
Okay. So am I making mention that we amend the agenda that we're to that point?
Yes.
Okay. To add. Let's use that.
Building permit for Stacy Valdez and then a business license for Matt.
Okay.
Devote.
So it's moved. We amend the agenda to 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 add a business permit and and building permit as stated.
Second.
And second by Councilman. Then. Have we proved that any further discussion? None being all favor say hi.
Hi.
I propose the same. Motion passed. Any communication from citizens? None being the consent agenda agenda through the minutes of March eighth, twenty twenty-two and approve the an approval of the bills, March ninth, twenty twenty-two to March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Quick most to preview agenda.
Been moved by Councilman Dan. Did we approve the consent agenda? Can I have a second?
Second.
And second by Councilman Zan to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Both same. Motion passed. All any affirmative. Public care and liquor license renewal. Lucky five and fast lane.
We have both have their renewal fee. So Fastlane currently theirs is would be approved but not issued since they don't currently have the facilities for it to be sold. So it would the approval would be approval, but I wouldn't issue it until that is verified by the Wyoming Liquor Commission. Then the second one is Lucky Five. They both all have completed and submitted all the required paperwork and verified by in good standing by the Wyoming Liquor Commission.
I move that we approve their license renewals for Fastlane and Lucky Five.
Then moved by Councilman Zan to prove the both renewal liquor licenses, Lucky Five and Fastlane. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Demme. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, say hi.
I.
I.
Both same. Only affirmative. Permits. We have building license for Brian Cooper. Reservoir store.
A business.
Or business license. Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So it's a second business that he's going to operate at the same location. So he has the previously had the realtor business and now he's also going to have a store for sporting goods and collectibles out of the same location.
Is that going to be on the corner of Third and Idaho?
Yep. Same same building as the Realtor store, but he's gonna sell bait tackle and other sporting good like items.
Can I motion to prove his business license? Brian Cooper's reservoir store.
I move we approve Brian Cooper's business license.
Been moved by Councilman Zan to approve the business license for Brian Cooper. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Demme. Approve the business license. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, say hi.
I.
All same. Motion passed. High Desert Housing, is this a business license?
It is.
Yeah. Hello. Cindy Simcox, High Desert Housing. Point for business license for this year.
So we had a oversight with all the construction she was doing, all the permits that were going through. We missed a business license. So when we were going back this year, we identified that brought to her attention and so she has submitted this for for a business license.
Because she rents the.
Correct. And we with all the other permits and all the construction she was doing, it somehow got lost in the shuffle. And then when we were doing our yearly renewals, we caught that. Kathy Christie caught it and then brought it to my attention. We verified she had not ever had one. So we contacted her and then she submitted it to take care of.
Kind of a motion to approve the business license for High Desert Houses.
I move we approve Cindy Simcox, Cindy Simcox's business license.
Been moved by Councilmen Zan. We've proved the business license for Cindy Simcox. Second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Demme. A further discussion. That being all in favor, say hi.
I.
I. Both the same. Motion passed. Her next business licenses for
Be for Sherry Valdez.
Sherry Valdez.
And she is taking the trailer formally from
This is moving.
Moving the trailer, correct.
Building permit.
And so she is going to place it around King.
Where is it moving from?
It's Owl or
Okennons.
Okennon. There we go. Okay. Was it Ken, Kenyon's house? The one that's being replaced with the new modular that they brought in? And the trailer is currently on that lot. They gave it to her and she's wanting to move it on Sixth Street. Lot number twenty-three.
Houston's trailer?
Yeah, the one that
The blue one?
Yeah, the blue one.
Oh.
Yeah. So they gave it to her. And
This. Where's it moving from? You said Owl Canyon.
Right behind the, it's right behind Lip Rippers.
By
Okay.
To Old Standard.
Yeah. She got it from now Kenyon's.
So moving that out since new ones, I guess this one that's here sitting is going in that spot.
No, that one that was given to her and she wants to move it to lot number twenty-three on Sixth Street.
Wow, it's interesting. Does it meet parameters to be?
That was going to be my question. If it was that, that's the same trailer that's coming from as I break Ryan.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, so I guess there's confusion because you mentioned, so Owl Canyon owns this property down here. Is that right? Or he owns this property?
He owns that.
It owns lot twenty-three?
Yeah.
So Owl Canyon owns the property, Sherry Valdez wants wants to move it on to his rental property.
Yes, long rental, correct.
And what year a trailer is that?
Nineteen seventy-eight. Fourteen foot by sixty-seven.
I don't know. That might be our statute. I'm not, I don't know. I'm maybe concerned of the condition of the trailer.
So rather than turn it, if this was just a formality as far as we understand it's here, but you would be up against, someone would have to provide a picture. Yeah, of the current trailer to the council and then this is like a grandfather deal, but different.
Yeah. Once it's moved, once it's moving, it's a it's a different. But I don't know. We may want to table that and look at every everything.
To, do you know when they need to move move it? I'm assuming it's soon and later because
They're trying to do this as possible. So but she's brought it in, dropped it off today. So did that a lot of time to, I kind of expressed the same concerns about that.
So I I think you're right. It would be better to table it. So it's not viewed as we're picking on somebody because if anybody else came to council and said, this is a trailer I want to bring in, whether it's sitting here or not, we would go through the
Yeah.
Kind of the same.
We have, we haven't had a chance to to look at it. Would would with the council table it maybe for a week and have a special session and we we might have some other things we could talk about. Actually, I don't know. Or do we just table it for two weeks? I'm good. I'm trying not to be put in a roadblock if there needs. I know I believe there's some urgency at the movement. We already gave them, we already, that's something else we were gonna.
Yeah, they were wanting to put it on First Street there or Elm Street, sorry, in between the
Until they, yeah, I thought that trailer was getting moved outside of city limits.
That's the last I heard until this. So it's evolved. I think they might have been moving out of city limits and then somehow she came to.
So can we table this until next council meeting unless there's some form of urgency that we could make an exception?
Correct. We, yeah, I mean, if there's, we can call a meeting eight hours north.
So it seems that worst case scenario, they can set it where this other one is sitting and store it for a minute if it came to that.
Yeah, that's right.
Versus we say we'll just store it down there. Once it's there, it will be at that. It's already there now. Drug it kicking and screaming in the middle of the night. And here it is.
You say that that lot that's moved to already has something on it?
It formally did. It's vacant now.
Yeah.
Then we moved that two, two or three trailers that were demoed and removed over the last year from that Sixth Street. So
Trying to clean that up. First nine, six nine homes. So it's not one of those ones were tore down, pulled out.
What are lots moving to?
Twenty-three, first, first in Idaho, so for six nine hole.
So twenty-four is the one that's
Six in Idaho.
Well, this is a cross street, but there's
It's got to be down.
Yeah. Yeah, that's her diagram isn't exactly. But
It's on, it's on east, it's on east six.
Where the ones that were tore down.
Correct.
Is up in the garages.
No, it's
That's the block further west.
Yes.
Yes.
I know Kathy knows the house that had all the issues with the dog. This lot is right next door to that.
Yeah.
Would be right to the west of that.
Okay.
I think
I move we table this issue till next council meeting unless there's an urgent need to have it moved. Prior to that.
I got a motion to table table this building permit to move the trailer by
Sherry Valdez.
Sherry Valdez to the next council level. Can I have a sec, can I have a second been moved by customers then? Second by Councilman Demme. Any further discussion? None being all favor, say hi.
I.
I. All same.
We'll inform them of that tomorrow. So make sure that they don't start moving it or something.
Sure. And we'll we'll ask for pictures, you know, between Buddy and me and so we may go there, look, look at it over and see what we, see what we're really dealing with. Very good.
Then Matt.
And we have Matt Debois's business license. Business licenses for
Say, he's wanting to put in a auto care. He plans on doing detail and car washing. And potentially moving into general preventative maintenance issues like oil changes, things of that nature.
The location of the business will be?
Two oh six West Second.
West Second, so that's
Next commercial.
Yes.
So it is his own.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second.
Yeah. Kind of motion to approve business license for Matt Debo.
I move we approve Matt Close's business license.
Been moved by Councilman Zan. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Demme. Any, any further discussions?
Says it's residential. Is that one of those county changes?
So, yeah, so the tax classification may be different than our zoning classification. They're not, they are mutually exclusive.
That's what it says on county map for it.
It said it calls it for this is what?
Residential.
Oh, for taxes.
Because there was a house there.
Yes, good. Any other questions? A good question, Mike. Then being all favor, saying hi.
Hi.
I. All the same. Motion passed. No appearances by citizens, any presentations, no unfinished business. New business, Viper Underground demolition. Contract execution.
We did have the contract that was reviewed by the county attorney as well as the project manual that were sufficient, also reviewed by W C D A and submitted to Viper. And Gino did sign it and submitted it back, okay, to begin construction.
Destruction.
Or destruction in this case. Um, this isn't the notice proceed. It's just the contract. So the notice proceed will come later. That'll come back before council before we
Proceeds. Supposed to start sometime in April anyway.
Yeah, well, pre-construction meeting sometime the first week of April, April fourth, and then the notice proceed will follow that probably the first meeting in April. Always need the authorization for the mayor to sign it.
Can I have a motion? Give me the authority to sign this contract and move forward.
Make a motion to approve the contract execution between Viper and the town. She's showing proceed.
Second. Been moved by Councilman Demme second by Councilman Zan. Enter contract with Viper Underground. Any further discussion? Then being all bearers say hi.
I.
I. All the same. Selection of an engineer for West Side Sewer Expansion. I see we have representatives from both Inver Miller and Gorn Associates. Do any, do we have any questions?
One for Inver Miller. You said you could get this done in thirty days. Is that correct?
Oh, we answered from here?
Yeah.
Please, please come up.
Yeah.
So I don't have that schedule in front of me, which which part of the schedule specific?
Phase one, the fifty percent.
Okay, the fifty percent design. Yeah, yep. We're confident that we could get that thirty percent.
You want to just briefly explain that? Because I was not in the interview.
Certainly.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so the process would be, we would meet with you guys for a kickoff meeting. And that kickoff meeting's purpose would be to finalize the scope of the work. So we know exactly what it is that you guys are wanting. And then you know, kind of define some of the parameters and make sure everybody's on the same page. And then we would begin the design and the field work and we would get some more survey data. We would start working. Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you. Yeah. So then we would start to work with Rocky Mountain Power and the D E Q and try to get multiple things going at once. It could be a hang up to the project schedule. Then we'd move into the fifty percent design and that fifty percent design would be primarily identifying the alignment for the pipelines and then location and the depth of that lift station. And then once we have all of that determined, we would be at about fifty percent of the design. And then we would sit down and meet with you guys again and make sure that you understand and are comfortable with where we're at. And then we'd also be looking for any input if you guys wanted us to change anything or look at something differently. And then, once we have that out of the way, we'd move into the ninety percent, the final design, which brings us up to the beginning of June. And with that ninety percent design, that's when we're submitting everything to the D D Q and getting it permitted. And right at the end of that is when we go to bid the project and go from bidding the project into construction as we can. So that, yeah, answer your original question, fifty percent design. Yeah, we are confident that that's an accurate number just because that's all that portion of that work will entail.
How, how was it? I mean, so this helps me a lot.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other questions? If none being we, the committee, the selection committee met with with both representatives, representatives of both engineering firms, we had to, we had two applications for this middle SOQ metals. These are based on presentation qualifications only has nothing to do with with pricing or anything. Just, and we used a Y dot format on how to to score that the engineering firms as a guideline to come up with how how these were, how they were ranked. I do know very close scoring. Not an easy choice, but can have a a motion to and how this works, we not, we will pick a who we're going to pick that will give me authorization to start negotiating a contract. And if we get into negotiation and we can't move forward to that contract, we go to the second, the the next one down. If it falls out of budget would be one of the reasons we would, if we can't afford it, the pricing falls out of budget. We can't afford it. That'd be one of the reasons we would, we would stop our negotiations. But if it falls in, stays within budget, then everything else is good, then it would move more. But I guess I'd like a motion from the floor recommend one of these or follow the recommendation of the of the selection committee move forward. Give me the authority to negotiate a contract.
I just want to read this.
Okay.
So I would so I would like to read what we have here as far as the in the interview committee recommendation and I'll make a motion.
Okay, very good. Okay, very good.
Following final scoring of the three members of the interview committee, all scores were tabulated for both firms with comments included with recommendations. Both firms interviewed, displayed substantial experience, staff qualifications, and the ability to complete the proposed sewer project to the needs of the town. Inberg Miller had a final raw score of two twenty-eight and an average of seventy-six versus Gors and Associates with a raw score. Of two hundred and twenty-two and an average of seventy-four. Inberg Miller scored higher on similar project experience and proposed timeline with qualifications of staff being nearly equal. It is the overall recommendation of the interview committee that the project be awarded to Inberg Miller. And the mayor enter into negotiations for engineer pricing. If the price is outside that of available grant award, the mayor should advance to the next firm, Gors and Associates to negotiate. I would make a motion that we. Enter into an agreement with Inberg Miller. For the proposed. Expansion of. West side of town.
Can I have a second move by Councilman Demi?
Second.
It's been second by Councilment. Any further discussions? Then being all favors say aye.
Aye.
I pose the same. Like to appreciate both companies proof. Take the time to. To put this together most. All your presentations. Thank you. Public Works Utility Vehicle Bid.
Received. Four total responses to our solicitation. Specifications of a one ton. Six point six liter diesel. Twenty twenty-three. And of the four, two did not meet the specifications that were outlined in the solicitation. The two that did were a twenty twenty-three Chevy Silverado. With a six point six liter Duramax. With utility box included was sixty-two thousand one eighteen twenty-five. The second. Bid was from Griner Ford and Casper. For a Ford F three fifty with a six point seven liter power stroke. In that bid. No, that was one. Yeah, that was a gas one and. It was also a twenty twenty-two, I believe. On the Dodge was twenty twenty-two as well.
Yeah. Sixty-two thousand four hundred twenty-two.
And then, yep, sixty-two thousand four twenty-two was from Griner Ford for twenty twenty-three F three fifty super cab with service body included. So the difference was, uh, two hundred and.
Which is cheaper?
The Chevy was cheaper by two.
Three hundred dollars.
So really close. And both meet the specifications outlined. Um, I didn't see, I don't believe Buddy and I were looking through, and we didn't find. Any component of one or the other that would disqualify one or was a needed commodity of one, so it, it just comes down to the price between the two.
Can we ask him what he wants to drive? Do you have a preference? Are you, is this, is this going to be for you or for one of your?
It'll be for Jane.
So you're gonna keep yours?
Yes, yes. The reason we went at diesel on these, like I was telling Bob. Was we hooked the trailer, the new trailer up with many on the mine, which is the gas. And it. I mean, it's got power, but it, it's, you know. It stumbles a little bit.
What's yours now, do you use Chevy?
Yeah. I, I will say the Chevy has two thousand five hundred more max towing capacity than the Ford. But the Ford has about a thousand more. Cargo capacity than the Chevy, so. And which one did have the, uh, was it an extended warranty on the end over the power train or? And that was the other difference too, was the Ford had a two hundred fifty thousand mile extended warranty on the power train versus Chevy had the hundred thousand. Warranty aspect on it.
That's, uh, Marshall. Do we have the luxury of choosing? We put it out for bid and we got a little bid.
No, not really, unless you spec, make specifications as.
If one of them didn't meet the specifications.
Right.
That's what I'm, maybe Ford added something on that might have priced him out of the ballpark, but that's. By adding it, by adding that, that's something we didn't ask for, but.
We asked for the warranty? That's kind of, that's unfortunate.
No, no, the addition, the additional warranty.
I mean, as far as what they're, because the one's off for the three hundred dollars difference to have. Hundred fifty thousand miles more of a warranty.
Yeah, that's the standard warranty that comes with it, not one that's added to like a supplemental. It's a standard warranty that the manufacturer gives.
But if we had put that in our bid specs, then it would be apples to apples, maybe, maybe G M would offer to give it to us for nothing. We, we don't know, that's my, that's my question. I, I think we put it out, we got. Now, now, if, if, if we had a bid spec and then there, there. Something that's substantial or something, and just same thing when we picked our, our equipment between Caterpillar and Bobcat. There, there again, that pricing was really, really close on that. So I think we're. My thought, we're, we're bound to take the little bit on, on, on this.
Well, on the one hand, it's already had, I don't know how energy, how close the trucks are, at least mechanic wise. Down with about, they're about the same.
Yeah. There's negligible difference between, I mean, both motors meet the specifications, the minimum is a six point six liter. Ford, this is a six point seven.
I mean, between the existing truck that they have.
Oh.
This now as far as.
My day, as far as towing capacity.
But I mean, truck, truck for truck for maintenance, so if you had a.
Oh.
Chevy mechanic, great on Chevy's, or you have a Ford mechanic, and you give the Ford guy a Chevy truck. Yeah, so at least, I mean, it's, it's pairing up with what we have, just like you got two Durangos instead of a Durango in a.
Yeah, so. Chevy, Chevy, so Chevy Dodge Ford, three different types of vehicles.
I have that rainbow fleet. That's what Y dot does.
Other than the price. All the specifications are met.
I move, we accept Fremont Motors, uh, bit of sixty-two thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-five cents for a new truck.
Been lose by Councilman Zan, do we accept the bid? Fremont Motors. Have a second.
Second.
Been second by Councilman Demick. Any further discussion? Then being all papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Falls the same, motion passed only.
Would like to add that the vehicle allegedly be here until December. And it'll be next budget year.
They got options in here, all sorts of stuff.
Yeah, luckily we have a vehicle replacement fund that's separate, so we, we're good there.
Do. Your bud want to talk about town cleanup?
I'll start, but I can get specific, so. Buddy and I both have been getting approached by. Towns. About various aspects of the town and things that don't. Exist any longer, like the brush pile and things of that nature, and what are we gonna do, so. Um, Buddy and I kind of kick some things around as far as what we could do, uh, one of which is open up a. Town cleanup week. Where you're able to bring in all your weeds and trimmings, uh, yardways, things like that, to the town shop or the town yard. And place in a pile which we could then, uh, burn there, a small pile that wouldn't become an issue during the. V E Q approved burn days. And then have a separate pile, uh, for metals, like refrigerators and various things, mattresses, whatever. Would go into another pile that we'd go to the. The dump, so we'd have three different piles essentially during that week that. Citizens could come drop off their items for that one week and that week only, and we would. Also make exceptions, I know Buddy and I did discuss about. If somebody is elderly and they, they can't do it themselves, that the town would assist them in that. But it would have to be something they would have to request and bring to our attention and show that they can't do it versus they just don't want to do it type aspect. And so, um, that's kind of what Buddy and I discussed, that we came up with the week of, the first week of May. Which is, uh, I believe we're gonna go on the second of May through the eighth of May, which is a Sunday. Right, we wanted it through the weekend, just, you know, most people are working on weekends. At least get the weekend for them. If they had something to bring it down, throw it into the trash can. Or an iron van, whichever, some branches. And hopefully it's late enough in the year with the weeds that it would be able to capture all that last before summer got here. Right, because burn permit goes to the enemy, the enemy, yeah, so. Then I think we discussed, maybe if we had to do a secondary, like a, a smaller version of it for weeds, like later in the fall or something, maybe we could do that as well. But at least for spring cleanup and town cleanup, uh, that week would at least allow. It had to take place this year. Right, because I usually put in for burn days, you know, spring and then fall, so. We thought, well, throw the cleanup days in with them, you know. But. Kind of leaves it up to the gals and city all to, maybe. By appointment, you know, an elderly handicap, somebody who can't call in, set up a date. The maintenance go out and pick it up, whatever they got to form. But hopefully with doing it this way, the people that's, are capable. They'll have to throw it in the van, right now we've got. Yard full of junk, you know, that's waiting to be hauled out from prior ones that they did that, you know, but they just allowed people to back up in there with nobody around. Throw it out, so. But yes, a lot of people have been. Asking about it. Or about the burn pile, you know, so. This is what we could come up with. Simplest way we could for, you know.
Are you gonna, are you going to screen the waste? Do you want to screen the waste that comes in?
Pick through it?
No, before you have to pick through it.
Well, and, and that's something, we'll have certain hours, somebody. Hopefully can be around, and yeah, like say they're not throwing out a big old jug of oil, used oil.
TV.
I know. We've already got a paint pile over there from a cleanup prior, you know, this kind of a. But. And we got an electronic pile, you know, so when we said TV. You know. So we had, the idea, I think, Buddy and I would sit down and put a list together to go out.
Right.
In the mailers, whatever, knows specifically what they can and. Cannot.
That's similar to the transfer station here, just because it's open doesn't, so my thought is. The town's willing to do it, but just because you're going to do it, doesn't mean you have to accept dead bodies.
Right, well, and that, that'll be one thing. You know, in the evenings, we will close the gate.
Close, close, but, but ahead of time.
Yeah.
You say we're not gonna take electronic waste, we're not gonna take tires, we're not gonna take. Couple of these things that, you know.
You know, mattresses, I see a lot of them laying around, uh, stuff like that, you know. So, yeah, we'll try to avoid. Hazardous. Dead bodies, of course, but. And we'll, like I say, it'll be, we'll try it, we'll see how it goes, you know, but. Hopefully it don't get abused, because that's what spoils up for everybody, one person uses it. It's like. It's kind of preview of it, and I know, buddy and I will get that together and, uh, get it out, mailed out to everybody, just for the. All the specifics of it. Any other thoughts or things we can do differently than we came up with?
I think this, I think the screening is a good idea on the elderly. I feel like it's just gonna backlash on the office girls in a way as far as. Who gets to decide what old is.
But it's not so much as old. If you're, you know, handicap, uh. I mean. That, I think that would be something that they would. I guess Buddy or I would be the ones that would shoulder that burden and not put it down to our, the office. And girls in the office have to, to fight that and take the repercussions, I think that would be something Buddy and I would. Be the ones that would.
I think we're just like Buddy there for the weekend, catch up, it's paperwork.
I'm good with that. Yeah. I sleep there too, or be a mattress. Yeah, you know. It, it's something to try, because like Chris said, I'm getting caught all the time over fast lane in the morning, having, getting my coffee for in the morning and. Right, the burn pile. Well, and if you're not gonna have burn pile, when are you gonna do cleanup days? Which it does help. You know. But like I say, it's such a small town. Most of us know each end of a door in town, you know, they call up, well, Chris called up and said, I don't want you to pick up this freezer. Like, no, you're fully capable, we'll bring it on down, things like that. I'm working, I'm sorry.
I still buy milk even though it's expensive, and my bread was twenty cents more today than it was ever in my lifetime. I asked Smiths when they would reduce that, and they just stared at me, they don't have to buy it. Welcome to Shishawee.
Fuel prices just went up today too.
Five fourteen.
Rider fuel, three ninety-nine, four fourteen.
Five twenty-four for diesel nerds. Well, I, so I guess in answer, I, I think it is worth trying as far as the, I think you got good monitoring in place. I think having the explanation on that, this is the expectation, this is what we can do.
Yeah, not a free for all.
Yeah. Basically, this solution we've got so far.
Have some rules and stuff, so at, at least it addresses, we're doing something to address the complaints and the problems, and we have a plan of.
And the cost of the town will be minimal as far as. What it could be or what it has been in the past.
That is something to try, you know, I have to tweak it. We do it later on or. Whatever. Just try to appease. Cause yeah, that brown piles now. Yeah. Hey, right, but. What do you do, you know, when it's out of your hands, you know?
Are you gonna pick up people's weeds too, is that part of the?
They can bring them. Well, it's. Say, for instance, if someone.
If, if someone's handicap causes, I got a whole bunch of weeds up against my fence, you're gonna come.
No, I think that's where we'll, we'll put limits on, you know, if it's a big tree that's laying there. You need to pick it up, but. Having the maintenance guys spend all day there cleaning up someone's yard, or nah.
But they're not able.
You know, well.
It's town cleanup.
No, if you're young kids.
Elderly person like me.
You know.
You're on your own, there.
Have my grand, grandson come in, put for, in for a business license legal. Find some entrepreneur kids around here and. Right. You know, for things like that, because.
Sounds like you got some discretion, so I, I would think this is.
This is the best I've heard so far, best solution.
I hope it'll work.
Thanks. So you and Chris have been working hard on this.
Nothing more. Uh, Kurt, your report.
Uh, so I, just for the council, I did submit a letter of intent to highway. A Y dot for street lighting. Um, so they will, which follows the safer house to school initiative, so that will be one of the things that. They will be coming around, they did lower the match at a nine point five percent. So the, the the local match for the TAF grant was lowered down to nine point five percent. So they have about thirty percent reduction in local match.
That's good.
And then I'll work with the school district and see if they will match our match, so to go fifty fifty like they did with the sewer or the sidewalk. That would be providing street lighting to pretty much the route that sidewalks go currently that it doesn't have. Street lights specifically at Pine Street where it's pretty dark and California as well. Uh, so that will, that was been submitted. And then they did open it up to allow a secondary project as long as the first one met the safer house of school, you can apply for a second one. And so I did talk to Dave and we're looking at doing, trying to stretch to the limits, the term stormwater mitigation. What that does, what that allows, if I can finagle this. It will allow us to be able to install storm drains along paved roads to prevent. Uh, transfer of materials and debris downstream to the roadway and also as well as protect the roadway itself from erosion as it goes down now. Uh, that would be California pine and oak and maple. And so. We're gonna try that and they'll be out here to take a look and see if I can make the telling case with Buddy. Uh, how that would influence that, but that would allow us to have those storm drains that we can, at some point have the ability to take. Uh, that is the. It's worth a shot.
Wet shoes. Wet shoes without it.
I mean, other than that, we don't have any other things here that would, outside of safer house of school that we, that fit the confines that. Since they opened it up, why not try, doesn't hurt us and the worst they can say is no.
Yeah, they were, we were told we wouldn't have any luck getting to clinic either.
That's true, I mean. Defied the odds before, so I'm gonna give that. Uh, a go. Um, and with budget coming up, I think that at least. I would like to have a workshop sometime at the end of April. Uh, maybe an hour before the second meeting in April with council. Uh, and then a second one if needed, uh, in May, then the third one obviously if you didn't make. But I would like to have at least one, the first one in, in April. Uh, but I would like to make it a seven hour, you know, shoot for two hours before your workshop. Probably we can get everything covered in that timeframe and hopefully that would streamline things and and not continue on. And then if needed, we can do more, but I would like to do it end of April. I would like to be two hours so before the council meet, I know it's asking a lot, but. I think that would be. I think we can get a lot of it done and that would shorten the other half to have extra meetings and and. Streamline things a little bit more if we did it that way. So get it done, most of it done in one shot, so if I have to have two or three meetings where you're coming an hour, two hour really, the three meetings in a row. Or having a separate day where you have a workshop that accounts. I think you get ninety percent done at that meeting.
Your, 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 your suggestion that we have the, the workshop, the same be as accounts meeting.
On the second meeting in April.
Experience tells me that may be not a good idea.
At least make it so it can't go longer than two hours.
Well, yeah, but but we, but we may not get done in two hours, it's, it'll long, as long as we're prepared for a four or five hour meeting and then. That would be.
Well, hopefully the second meeting in April will be a short meeting.
We'll have to try to schedule, make it such.
And then the workshop two hours, and that's why I said if we have more to do, then we can have a shorter workshop at some other point that. To the, before we start doing the actual budget stuff, but I just think that that would help. Give us a lot of time, enough time to be able to go through things and make. I could retool things during that meeting instead of after, but do it and then come back a week and then come back the next week. I think we could get nine percent of it done.
We have to have three readings.
Yeah, this, yeah, this, yeah.
We have, we have to have three readings.
No, I'm not talking about the readings, I'm talking about just the workshop, just getting over and just going over all the stuff before I.
And we have to have our final reading by one day.
Uh, well, in June.
Uh, we haven't received the credit, we probably gonna get that.
That's why.
Need to have that digested.
That was just my suggestion to. Try and make streamline, has nothing to do with the readings, I mean, it's, you can get ninety percent of it done and we have one more workshop if we need to fine tune something before actually. Right, get the budget done, which would be the second meeting in in May, then the first meeting in June and the second. Time to get all that done, hopefully if we have to have a additional workshop, it'll be very short and narrow scope.
Like that's a good idea, we'll look at that one. Save less meetings, that's good. Executive session, we refer to executive session. Roundtable, Mike, do you have anything you'd like to talk about at all?
I need to report my meeting in Casper.
Please, you brought us a check too, right?
This is from Wyoming Community Gas. For four thousand, two dollars and four cents. So we need to write a thank you letter to them and. Have it signed and so. Um, other things we've talked about that, for those people who are on the pass on rate for any company. It's mostly what happened would be Black Hills. They are charging because February, two years ago, two thousand, or two thousand twenty. There was a very cold winter that year and the state utilities commission approved. Only for the pass on people with pass on rate, a twelve point six cent. Firm charge to cover for loss money they did not make in two thousand twenty February. If you were on the index rate, a step rate. You are void, not have to worry about that. But. They talked about, that's one thing, nobody knew about. Uh, other things they talked about, uh, they have a new advertising company. The Waldwood, Waldwood retired and they went out in the company to, uh. For advertisement for media. And they talked about one is to set up a, with the towns to have a site for gas suppliers. On your website. And say these are gas suppliers, this is how you contact them, and then explain. What a fixed rate is, what a index rate is, all those terms on that website. And the, the.
Yes.
Average, advertising company is going to make that up.
You bet, no, give me the.
They will give you the information and you can just put it on our website, so it will make. Easier for that, uh, the other part is for those of you who pre-sign for their gas. Because of April first, we have our window select our gas supplier. If you sign during the pre-sign period from February to April first, you're used to get a better rate. Uh, what else they talked about?
And if they sign up through the town, we're still good.
We right, right. We get a better rate.
We get better if they can, people who sign up for gas, come to town home, get signed up.
Right, and we need to put that on our website.
Yes, we do.
Is how we do that, um. This last up to right now, a cubic foot of gas is going between forty, forty-five cents. Per firm right now. Last two years was twenty-eight to thirty. Uh, fifteen years ago was forty or forty-five cents, so it went down and during some. Uh, future, they talked about politics, United States starts shipping gas to Europe to take place, Russian gas. More cool power plants are shutting down and switching to natural gas. And the weather on the east coast this winter has been pretty rough. Higher demand for gas, so. Natural gas prices to continue to rise, um. Biggest thing is get signed up early and look at what you want indexed. You have a fixed monthly fee of so much melted up for the average, oh. In order to get an average fee, you have to be on your customer for three years to get a background history of how much you use.
You can't use the sites.
Right.
History, you have to use your history.
You have to use your history, right. It was a good meeting, I learned a lot, so. So I have to report.
Thank you. Talked a little bit about. Rock Park. It's, uh. Had a good conversation with Janet Juries, uh, of Wyoming State Parks. Further explained some of the potential, what we're dealing with there if we do take, do take ownership of it. It's, uh. Like as a reported, ordered last time that, uh. That we, you know, we would. Know that the land is gonna be a, gonna be a, some sort of. Outdoor for outdoor recreation forever, that's part of the, part of the contract. I think we, I've already discussed on ways to. We can apply if we, something's obsolete, then they have applied, I think we talked last time, the rec board already applied to softball field. Now, let's to the restrooms that we declared ob- obsolete, uh. If we. So, so desire, there is a lot of. Funding available if we're looking at anything, I don't see what our budget is, I don't think we have. Right now, I don't have any budget, we have to spend much money on that, on the park. Uh, or very, very, very little, but, uh. I have talked to the. Surveyors and I, I need to go. And see exactly. Your understa- is your understanding Bob, that they're wanting to keep the playgrounds and 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 the garden. In that little park area, right all the way up to the boundary of the softball field?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's.
He's scared of balls, he's both.
Right, and that's sort of, yeah, we need to make sure we're. And we like, we talked about maintain our access going, going down there, I believe. That it might be less than fifteen acres, I think that fifteen acres include, did include, you know, maybe where the. Possibly where the survey run should possibly where the garden is in that park area. Cause I know that building was sort of separate if you look at on MapQuest. So other, other network sort of. Need to sort of few, few, few of those things out before we, we, we move forward. Like, would you like to add anything I'm missing, Bob, or do you know any?
I'll go to their meeting, no, when it's the twenty-eighth, at six o'clock, it's important, say. Next thing on the list is a surveyor.
Right.
Not in nowhere, you're up, you are with us.
I'm, uh, pretty much up to speed as far as why I need paperwork wise, but for me to move forward, I need a legal description from the surveyor as well. So I have the. One form that I need to file with the D when the, that's finally drafted up and then letters and then ten. Have to go be signed by rec board and the town council. As to the transfer, and that has to get submitted to state and national parks.
You, Marshall, you had some pretty good conversations with them too, I think since last time, would you like to share that a little bit with the council?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you covered, the majority covered it pretty well, so. The. That Rock Park was originally created using funds from the National Park Service, so. That will, has to stay. As an outdoor recreation in perpetuity, whoever takes it. Part of that demolition or whatever you do. How you, whatever you want to create, has to get approved by the state and then by the National Park Service, there's just a method for doing it. Uh, I don't know anything, I can't tell you what would get turned down or what would get approved or anything like that, that's. I just know that that's part of the process that has to motion, same with getting demolition. For the items that are out there, mine are talking with the, the state, uh, they've already. Put in for removing a lot of that stuff that's quote, quote obsolete and falling apart and. Soon as that gets approved, that part of it too is, as far as getting that stuff done. As long as the town is showing that they're actively trying to fund. Projects and demolition and that's kind of what they're looking for.
Any other questions about Rock Park for now?
I'll just tell them, we're waiting for time.
Okay, it's, uh. Uh, like the, bring up, we got vehicles, uh, where Chris has been working on. Uh, acquiring a, a canine vehicle. Would you like to touch bases on that a little bit, Chris?
So. Um, when we instituted the vehicle replacement form, which we just being third year budget, you were being on the fourth, but you're of it. Um, there's one vehicle per year. And so Buddy's vehicle was just coming budget year for that one and the. Police vehicle for a canine would be, well, just before we had a canine, I guess I should prefix that. Um, and so none of our vehicles currently are canine, obviously we're making it work, but the. Apparently a canine dog, especially a. Belgian Malinois, how you say that, likes to chew on things, so sometimes he, uh, gets loose in the car and. Munches on stuff, uh, we keep him in a cage, but at any rate, so that led to when we were looking at. Down the road, the police vehicle, which would be fiscal year, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four. So we're getting ready to go into twenty-two, twenty-three, which was the one we just talked about with Buddy's vehicle and then the next one would be fiscal year twenty, twenty-four. Um. After speaking with the dealerships and the fiasco with vehicles. That time from order to outfitted for police vehicle and ready to go is approximately two years. Um, so there's, looking through that, if we were to order a vehicle in May. Which is an open window period that it ends. That it would be allegedly delivered sometime in February or go longer, so it could potentially show up three or four year. Or three or four months prior to the next budget year starting. So if that case happens, there's three different things we can look at doing. I'm, I'm gonna apply through Department of Homeland Security, since it is a canine vehicle that would be, uh, accessible for. Around to showing in the county, it qualifies for homeland security funding. If that arrives, that would then pay for that vehicle when it shows up. That would go in in October, kind of like we did with the, uh, the admin or the new town hall building through that, it'd be the same process. Uh, that those fundings, uh, applications go in in April and then the vehicle would arrive. After funding, then we'd be able to purchase it that way. Secondary, secondary way, since it would arrive, that didn't all through, since it would arrive three or four months early. Before the next budget year started, we would use, there was approximately seven. Before the next budget year started, we would use, there was approximately seventy two thousand dollars in the vehicle replacement fund reserve account. We would use that to purchase the vehicle and then in actual budget year start, we would not buy a vehicle that year. Kind of similar what we did with Buddy's uh mini excavator and. Skins to your this coming budget year, that money will go back into that that purpose. Or option three, we do nothing and they sell it back to somebody else and then we wait and we're again. If we did that, the problem is that vehicle would not arrive until. Approximately March or February of twenty twenty four, it would not be upfitted outfitted until fall. Time frame, we're looking at two years, almost two years from now, so that's kind of what we're up against. Option four is we put out a bid for a used vehicle, try and find one and. Take one that's already outfitted, cheaper, it's used, and go that route. And we could do that at probably any time, so those are kind of the four options for looking at. Not doing anything yet, but that's just kind of what is coming that we'd have to figure out.
What's the? Thought of just taking away her vehicles, just made it to a canine. Other than just gonna have to be replaced.
So we could do that, um thing with that is is that we would have to. Go back to an outfitter, remove all the stuff, purchase new stuff and put it back, so we're looking at another fourteen thousand dollars just to redo it. Also, we run into a vehicle running seven days a week, so when it comes up for trade in for three, whatever years down the road, it's gonna have. Less value, obviously, that they do. Uh. And so it it falls within our our vehicle replacement plan and fund, however, uh it. We had to order now, we could come in before the next budget year starts, which if it did, then we would have to use our reserve. Vehicle replacement funds to pay for it, and then we wouldn't budget a vehicle to fall in here. And so that money ultimately would be replaced in that reserve fund, and a reserve fund is meant for vehicle explodes, we're down a vehicle and. We have to, you know, whatever happens, that's what the reserve is, we want to have that reserve, we don't want to, you know, just spend it, but. It would be replenished that next budget year, which would be three or four. Months after, if we had it by ourselves, hope is to get a grant, I prefer to get grants to buy everything, so um that's plan number one, but. And worst case, if if we did order it, um is what we would use is uh Riverton is actually putting in their bids, we wouldn't have to readvertise. Take the back walk right off their bid in this case, and so that would be out in May and well, end of April. And then we could uh. Utilize that, um and if we decided not to pick it up for whatever reason, again, then they sell to somebody else. Yeah, we're gives us options, I guess.
We're, we can place the bid and we're not. Hell, we're not ob- not obligated, they're ordering it in, but if we don't take the vehicle. They just sell it to, that's how we got our first derangle, the state ordered it, didn't pick it up. And we was able to pick it up in land or there was a state road vehicle, that's how we, that's how we purchased it. And the plan originally called for year six. The town getting a travel vehicle, and so how this would affect all that is that. My current derango, when it times out, you're two more years. And when it's finally replaced, year three, you know, it would be time.
It would uh become a town's vehicle, and so that first vehicle, once we have our a base vehicle set. There would be a trade in on our first vehicle the next six year, six year period. So that vehicle stays here, so it would, we would have one year without a trade in, that first vehicle, but after that, every vehicle will be traded in as they go through. So it doesn't, it doesn't really change anything from that perspective, uh the funds are there for that from the vehicle replacement fund, so. It doesn't affect that if we had to go down that route. That's different, that's probably fifteen thousand trade and maybe ten thousand when it comes time. So that first year, we wouldn't get that, but it would stay with the town as a travel for council and that. Would stay as long as council decide that they like that derango until they want to upgrade to a G O C Yukon to watch the Nolly or something.
Hellcat.
Do you have any interest in, so Y dot sells the highway patrol SUVs, I just, I just look, they had some last week. They take everything out prior to, I don't, I know the guy in Cheyenne that does, his name is Jeff Madden. If there would be any chance in the world if the municipality approached and said, we'd like to buy one of your canine vehicles.
That's what I said was option four, we could. Look for a prior use, but because it's used, we still have to put it out for bid. Now, the law doesn't say how specific you get on the bid, but we do have to put it out for that.
So I wondered if that would help in the in the mintrum, so those vehicles, so after they've been. So when typically what I see on those, when they go for sale, it'll be in the right now, two thousand fourteen, fifteen, sixteen year. And the pricing on them is probably six to eight thousand dollars for the the unit, you had something like that. For a year or a year and a half that makes any sense while we're waiting for the.
Yeah, I mean, would to do that, like I said, we have about seventy two thousand in our reserve vehicle replacements. I would have to, the council would have to transfer that in to be able, we don't have a budget this year by it, or we could budget in next year from the get go. Uh however we did it, but that would be an option that would be a lot faster, uh but the canine will be operational at the end of May. And. We're gonna make it work, I mean, you are, but it it does cause a vehicle, you know, seven days a week being driven. Let's add up as well as it's not outfit for a dog, and so although. Officer Leefren said that his dog okay in that little cage, but it's a big dog and it. You know, I wish he would train a dachshund or something or a chihuahua via canine, it's gonna be a lot easier, just put a little bit back there, it's fine. But in this case, it's a it's a full sized dog and uh. For example, this last two weeks ago, he got into a uh situation where a arrest had to be affected. And the subject resisted and became violent combatant. Uh he had his dog in the car, luckily at Fastlane, there were some uh uh former retired police officers happened to be there. Uh and provided assistance and some of the uh workers of Fastlane came out and nature of, you know, the okay. Um but anyway, it resulted in while you had to combat a subject that was being detained and held down, he had to go in, transfer his dog. From the cage, because that was the only compartment that the dog could be secured in, into his other side of the vehicle. And then put the prisoner in there, and then he had a dog that's in a plexiglass window, um not so happy that he had company in the vehicle. Um so that that I guess is what you're talking about, you know, e- even best case, even if we went down this route. Uh we're still talking a year and a half before we'd be operational, and if we didn't, we're talking no over two years, but.
I believe what Mike's alluding to, possibly the state may have one available now, now, yeah. That could get us by and it may be. Still got, do we still got outfit when it comes in and get and else and else you can work a deal with the state that they they if they have a canine vehicle. Available that they don't take all everything out.
Well, that would be the exit, so Jeff Madden is one of his in charge, like he might tell you flat out, no, we can't do that. But when they advertise it, they'll typically, you know, it's very specific to the bid, this may contain. Dog odor as was used as canine vehicles, so they, so they already have them, but like I said, I, it would just be a question of. We're looking for a canine vehicle and they might say, sorry, we can't do that, or actually, we could do it this way. But in the meantime, so you'd have that, because I I think it'll always have its value, so if you, if you, I mean, you'd have your up. Whatever you upgraded it to.
Okay, so say we know that route like you're saying, we got that here and we, it was goodbye July, August. And we ordered this vehicle, it did come in and we could always, like you said, have value or give it to the town.
Gives the town swap that traded in.
And that would have a uh transfer vehicle, some slight dog wars.
The other option, you would have a fourth vehicle in case one breaks down.
That's kind of what I was.
I'll take you for a ride. Uh I'm not the dog, it's got a riding backseat. If it chews that car, I'll put it out.
Actually, nothing at this point, um but yeah, that that would. Be a a stopgap, because no matter what, it's it's a weight in this route and then. Um. The whether we kept it and kept that, we went that round, got that that way, and then when it was finally replaced, then it would be going down park. Um or traded wherever the council decided, um some to look into, and that's what I say, option four would be to do that at the interim, um. Then you know, decision to be made, you know, if it's possible, that we just wait till twenty three, twenty four to order, which would. You know, still be, but that would get us by hopefully two years. Order now.
So either even if. Yeah, I I so I would, I would say go and both get one now, we're gonna use it, you're gonna write more tickets, pay for it anyway, so. And then if. And then in the meantime.
We talked about this, well.
Right. While we're, but by tickets, I mean drug bust.
We're gonna be out there more often, be more productive and therefore.
Protect down.
Yeah. Right, oh, and that's the thing with the canine is the highway patrol has nothing, uh county has the one, but it's only part time and. I hate to say it, we're kind of in the middle of the state and there's lots of stuff that comes through here.
Truck bus got worse than Shonin on the resale market anyway.
There is civil civil forfeitures that are are derived, and that's where the our town attorney can stand on doing that one.
That's a win win, it gets better business, we get safer environment.
I go for a safer environment. But I get what you're saying, it makes sense, and I, you have that information, I would. Get a shot like a top with Marshall, make sure that, you know, anything that whatever situations that allow us to do that are there and then go from there.
Then let's put this on the agenda for next meeting.
Okay. Yeah, Joel, I was talking to the mayor about it and he just wanted this.
It's uh. One other thing I want to touch bases with uh. There we had. At a. Had a businessman come in Thursday, we've been discussing last call, named Dwayne Raymond. Uh Dean R Concrete, he owns Dean R Concrete, one of the things, he wants to to build a. A restaurant. And uh. In Shonin. The the chosen site is on the west end of town. Herp's Road and West, north of the, north of the highway. With looking at approximately where he wants located and the land he's looking at is is approximately seven acres. He's ready to start construction as soon as we sell him the land.
This would not have to go up to bed because it's economic development.
It's it's economic development, we would have to, let me. Sort of outline what we'd have to do, we can come up with a price that we, because the economic development that we think is fair to the town. We still have to have the the land appraised. Uh the appraisal, we don't have to sell it for the appraised price. Because of economic development, we also do not have to put it out for bid. Because of economic development. But. He he intends uh will have to have Buddy look at, I know we have a water line out there near there, I meant to. Have a more conversation, we've talked about it a little bit, but there is a water line out to see what it's gonna do to provide water. Out there, he would have to put beyond septic system. Uh I believe he's putting up, if I understand him correctly, a thirty two hundred square foot building. Uh. He talk talks about uh. Wants to put some, make something attractive for people to come and see, may place some old vehicles out there. Maybe small tractors, some outside seating, he likes it, if you notice when you're driving into town. From Riverton to the north there, you 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 see all those rocks and stuff out there, they're kind of kind of interesting. He wants to build it out near there. So his proposal is to take about seven acres. But have to get a server or get out there, walk it to get it, get exactly that, but that's uh. That's what, that's what he's looking at.
Is there liquor license available?
They're a bar grill, bar, there is a bar and grill available, yes.
Not retail though, just.
Yeah, so the the barn grill. No.
We lost our third one.
That's right.
Bar bar grill license, they, I forget the exact, is it sixty percent? There's a food and forty percent alcohol, there's a formula, but you gotta sell more food than you. Then you, then you do alcohol.
So it's similar to like several of the establishments in Riverton, they're not a, they're not a bar, they.
You can't buy and leave, you go and consume there on premises.
With your meal, with your meal.
Right.
Like like a rusty truck, I guess, you know, or.
Right.
Chopsticks, I think it's either apply for the stuff.
It's socking up there.
Good stuff.
Yeah. But anyway, that'd be the type of type of facility.
Brett's, so something like that is what our licenses would allow, same.
And this is is in town, not in town.
It's inside, yeah, we've just annexed it.
So it's part of the annex.
Yeah, part of the annex.
Cause if we're going, we're next all the way.
To here. How deep is that water line there? I mean, I know we had problems with that water line in the past, was that further down by the. Pretty electrical.
You're talking that one on the property that George.
Yes.
Yeah, it's at least six, seven foot there.
Is that line on the other side of the road?
We, you can see that T track right there, and it runs right, right, pretty much on the north side of it, right along that little T track.
Cause the town bought the property to.
Protect the water.
Right.
Yes.
So by selling this chunk over here, we're not, the water line is still protected, it's on the north side.
Right, okay, that was my concern.
I actually meant to meet, have meeting with Bud today, we were about that, but I ended up over at the power company all day. So that didn't have, didn't, it's that meeting didn't, didn't happen, but uh but anyway, yeah. He's ready to start going, you know, I would. Like the blessings of the council to start moving forward on on this. If uh. And start start negotiation and and looking in. Getting getting out the way, the land exactly where it is, we like probably end up getting a surveyor involved with it. Have Bud, we have to identify the cost, what's gonna be to the town, the 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 water. To see what it costs to put a. Per stop or whatever up there to supply water to him, uh. I would uh that way. Try to identify some of the costs and that may affect our selling price. But we're, I think uh. Think it could be a a great addition to the town, town, she's showing going to employ some people. And have a restaurant option, you know, that being, I think this could be a a good thing, uh. I know Dwayne is personally really excited about doing doing this, and he's been working. On this since last fall, when he first approached me about it. And uh. But I know. He said he already has a building, he has funding in place to do it. Said he's anxious to getting. Said he's anxious, it's getting warm weather and. You know, we're gonna have to go through the process that the town has to do, it's gonna take a little bit of time for us to sell it, we will, you know. We'll have to advertise it, even though it's it's economic development, we still need to go to advertise it, we'll have to advertise it three times. We gotta have our appraisal, I'm pretty sure the appraisal has to be put in the advertisement, that it. Value of the property is X amount of dollars and we're selling it for X amount of dollars and if that amount has, happens to be less than appraised value. Because the economic development and it's for the betterment of the town, that's why we are selling the land at that price.
Does the town have to, if if in that public notice period, if someone approaches the town with interest. In in said property, does the town have to entertain another?
No.
Bid?
No, no.
So even, so even if it was pretend number, so so the dollar doesn't, so in essence, let me start over, in essence, this. This is an agreement going forward, so if somebody wants to contest it, they have to have some grounds to contest it.
Sure.
But they, but they don't have the opportunity to jump on and say, well, I didn't know that was for sale and so I, I'll pay you that too.
I don't know a hundred percent how like, well, yeah, it's. But let's, let's say, you know, I don't know. It depends how our agreement's written, it's gotta be legal, I know the basic. Of it, but say Amazon came in, but we want that seven acres, we're gonna employ two hundred and eighty-eight people and uh. You know, and we want to offer you two million four hundred and eighty thousand dollars and fifteen cents. If we walked into that, honestly, I guess I I don't know a hundred percent that answer, but I know, you know, it's not up to bed. And I think if we negotiate a contract or, I don't know where where we're at, I know we gotta have three readings. It gives the public, if it's not in the best interest of the town, that's why we're doing it and if. The best interest of town would be take the Amazon, we might, yeah, you want to, that's what I'm.
Sure, that's that's the one, if it comes down to, like I said, if Amazon said, we know there was seven acres, but we'll give you a million dollars.
Right.
Versus this person over here is only gonna pay you fifty cents for it.
And we're gonna give you.
Well, sorry, we're taking the fifty cents.
So Marshall, you you may.
Yeah, I went over the statutes, they gotta reread them again, but essentially what it comes down to is what you're saying, you gotta have an economic. Development reason, you gotta do the appraisal, and then the big thing is, not only are you gonna have a reading that. Or putting it in the paper, but you have to have an actual meeting and vote on it.
Yes.
That's where people are gonna have the ability to.
Complain, like the public comment.
Public comment to try to sway your decision.
You gotta advertise it three times, three weeks or three different times before you have the meeting to vote on it. So the public has, because it is public land, public money.
So that's where the uh, I guess, feedback has disputed about it, that's where it comes in, it's at that meeting, trying.
Right.
And trying to sway you as the public people voting on this before that.
We probably could sell it to Amazon.
We're selling to Amazon?
Get that room, we're out there.
Amazon's coming to Shoshone?
But but anyway, but that is, but I would, I'm just. Sort of, that's sort of what I'm intending to move along, you guys don't have any heartburn about it or anything.
No, cause I I I think the process will be, like I said, if he wants to build sooner than later, I think there's probably gonna be a couple of months. I mean.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna take us a while to get through it and I explained that to him, that we, we gotta. We gotta do what we gotta do as a municipality to do it legally, because it's not. It's that, it's our public, it's our city's land.
Well, we have to get it, first we have to get it platted.
Right.
Yeah, we can even advertise anything.
Right.
So it's, yeah, it's, it's gotta be.
Let's put this on the next agenda as well, because we were having. This survey.
Right.
Yeah, might as well, get it all surveying at once and.
Yep, I'm, hopefully gonna be talking to our surveyor again tomorrow about it.
Okay.
Okay, I can do that, I can put it, once I get uh with the mayor, he can price it, I can do that.
Use the same appraisers supposed to appraise. The other town properties.
Yeah, we're trying to, we're we're trying to. Right now, I'm waiting, we contacted someone for appraisal, they're looking at it to see if they could do it.
They can fit in their busy schedule in the speck of Wyoming?
Well, well, they're 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 busy, I also find someone that's qualified to do the commercial. Yeah, that's, that's a lot harder project uh. We probably don't, commercials cost, appraisals cost a lot more and I don't know if we need that's vacant land, if we actually need a commercial appraisal there or not, I don't know. It'd be any, any cost for us to spend more money.
It's not its own commercial.
Yeah. And then that'll be another thing. That we gotta zone it, that's another thing, you know, that that we would have to do.
It's gonna want agricultural use.
I I'd also on a side note, like Dad, his daughter wants to buy a few acres near there and build a new home. She's got two small children, she wants them to go to school and she's showing. This is a, just as a side, side note, if we get where we can sell that, some land out there also, anyway. But I, I'll go ahead and try to get the surveyor lined up and chase that down and. And uh try to get the appraisal chased down. See if we can. Get, see if we can get everything we can get done before next meeting. Basically, I believe that's. That's all I have, nobody has anything else, kind of a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved by Councilman Demick, he was real quick on that, with a real fast response from Councilman Zen, second to adjourn. And no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same.